That I felt like the next step was to re-lead our group. And then we could forward the recommendation now we proceed including having legal.
It seems that there's a desire to.
I think it makes sense. Okay, the P C C C meeting and that board retreat, obviously, those were both rescheduled. Due to conflict, I'm sorry, it's gonna be rescheduled. Yeah, Deb send out another doodle for that. To try to find a date that we can reschedule, those obviously don't have to be on the same night, but we did that. Because our other month was jam packed with meetings, so we did schedule two on the one night. So Deb, could you send out another doodle? To the board? And it would be Pam for the P C C C one, the board retreat would be me and the board.
We're on the P C C C one as well.
And no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said just.
I added you to the P C C, otherwise it's me and the board, you, Leslie. It'd be on the P C C C, the board retreat is just me and you. It's a very exclusive retreat.
We have a lot of now.
Okay, moving on to. The ten discussion and action items. A, second reading approval of policies. Two two one, two two two, two two four, two two five, two two five three point three, two five four, two sixty. And then some updates to five thirty three, deletion of five forty three and five forty three rule and five thirty three point one. Does anybody have any additional comments or questions about this?
The second readings, they're all second readings with no changes made from the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve policy two two one, two two two, two two four, two two five, two five three point two, two five three point three, two five four, two six zero and five thirty three.
I'll second the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any conversation?
Did we include the deletion?
No.
No.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes. Motion passes.
Then I'll make a motion to delete policy five forty three, five forty three rule and five thirty three point one rule.
I'll second the motion to delete those policies.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? If not, all of them favorite?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Move on to the D H S course handbook for preferences.
Okay, so as we, I don't know when you PDF this, but I have new pictures up on the front. For next school's course handbook. But I guess the big takeaway here is we started, so I took over in the summer. We found out in July that kind of our scheduling was kind of going backwards. So what we did last year is they were given the master schedule at Panther playing a night and then we just fit kids into their different sections. So I kind of, and Marissa and I kind of did some brainstorming. And we changed the course registration a little bit this year. And so I'm just gonna do copies of these, this is not developed ahead of time, but. So it's by E tray level and again, I could have done this without Marissa. Cause she, obviously two very new people to this, still around things, but. So we kind of laid it out and there are some errors on here which we found going through the process, but. That's what kind of anything that you do new, so everything's laid out by grade level. So what we did at Panther playing a night is. We had kids fully fill, incoming freshmen and our current tenth grade students. We had our current freshman class come, we had a really good attendance on both grade levels and their parents. And they filled out the course registration, our grade ten, heard about just a different opportunity to do a credit. Opportunities as well as youth apprenticeship and work experience that they could start taking as a junior. And then my staff, we, they went through a course, we updated things. And then the, there's a lot of minor things, like just with descriptions, just rewarding things. All the charts were updated, like per, so if you scrolled down a little bit. Like go to like behavior culture, for example. So all these charts were updated, so you can specifically see. You know, what grades are offered, what classes are offered. So like for example, horticulture, you know, like they're offered for every grade level, so all the charts were updated, there was no lines in between them. So it was a little bit confusing for parents, so again, minor change. Some of the, like the course flow charts were updated, before your plan thing was updated. Some of the classes that we haven't ran in two years were taken off. Or the, the classes that were, when they did students in them, were also taken off of the course handbook. And then we are adding, the biggest change is we are adding three courses. So we are offering drivers ed in-house. Free of charge to families and we are offering infant and toddlers. For grades nine through twelve and then our biology two, which is like applied biology. That's all in there by, under each category, so. A lot of work has been done to the course handbook, you can see a lot of yellow, but a lot of the stuff in here is minor things or like the prerequisite. Prerequisite for each course might have changed a little bit, like you had to get a B in certain class to take A P Lang and Whit. For example, so. Like you'll see some things like on the dual credit, like restaurant management should have never been a dual credit, it's never been offered as a dual credit, so a lot of different, like minor changes. With, with the handbook, so kudos to my staff, they did a really good job with, you know, kind of planning all this stuff and. Maybe changes to adapt to the needs of our students too.
Taylor, I want to emphasize the, the change that they made to the registration process and they say, and so that is that. So previously that, more or less what kids got is they got a schedule and here's the classes. And you pick from these classes that are in these different blocks. What they've done is effectively they've surveyed the students with this. And the students drive the schedule, so the classes that get the most students sent and obviously heavy required classes, you don't have a choice. But the elective classes, the student registrations drive, then they build the schedule based upon. The students selected the courses, so what that does is avoid you having classes that might have three kids and then four kids. And it gives students the, the flexibility to, if enough kids want these classes, you'll run two sections of a course if enough kids want to take it. So it's a schedule that's built by student request, which is. Like outstanding as far as giving students a voice in what are these classes they want to take for the electives and stuff, so. I just want to emphasize the importance of that change and the impact that's gonna have on the schedule.
So I just kept one question, this looks awesome, so great work. Something like driver's education as an example. It appears season two is doing the behind the wheel, so we won't like need to purchase a car to do that because of contract. But then are we, like, is, and then when I ask the question, it doesn't mean I won't support it by any means, but does it cost us anything? Like, is there a cost?
It costs us nothing. What this does for our students, and this is kind of the way that summer school drivers ed works as well. The students are then able to take the classroom portion for free. However, in order to get their form and to get their temps, the institution that gives them the classroom also has to provide them the behind the wheel. So we have a relationship with CISA two who has a very good reputation with drivers ed throughout the state. That I send along the list of the students who have passed and completed all the requirements. Then they pay for behind the wheel through CISA.
The student does?
The student does.
Okay, so it's not free?
It's, so the classroom portion is free. The behind the wheel is not free. See if they choose to take it through, through us here at school, they have to do behind the wheel through CISA two. And. That is a significant cost reduction.
That's great.
Yeah, so we've just been able to offer, kind of with the other classes, I'm guessing they're just more of a need, so we're. Using our staff differently, we're not increasing staff, we're using them differently and along with the fact that we have. A staff that can teach the behind the wheel and how cool is that? Which is offering that opportunity for our kiddos and families and then what costs. We're still, at least at this point, we haven't decided that we're taking that piece of it on, so. And, and there is, there are scholarships available for students. Where they can, if they apply and get that scholarship, they can get behind the wheel.
Cause they would have to pay for it, and we actually will have three staff that are certified behind the wheel.
That's fantastic.
John Downs, Troy, Troy, New hair Troy, and I know she is, but you won't get her driving by the wheel with kids, but technically, yeah. Folks, they, they work for CISA two for that part though, not for us, but. The convenience of this is now kids don't have to find, you know, the way to get to a driving school and take that class and, or wait for the summer. Summer school, which means now kids, you're gonna get more kids able to get their licenses more quickly and stuff, but yeah, under existing staffing, it's. It's, will be one of the few schools that's able to do this too, which is a nice lure for the.
From the registrations that we've gotten already, we have twenty six already signed up for drivers ed.
I can only imagine, I have.
And not only the freshman, it is like.
No, I would have gone through the time that I had to take my kids to.
Yes.
True, like we were in the time and it wasn't here and it isn't even just about the cost, it's. Trying to figure out like this kind of time, so like to have a local resource is a big deal.
Well, another thing, there are students that are taking online and that's not really for everybody. You really have to be diligent and able to stick with pace of whatever that is. Instead of just like trying to do it at the last second to try to get it all done. So it does give the students that that's not gonna be a good option for, and I'll let.
And the students signed up already for next year's classes?
So with this registration, it's a paper copy right now. Eventually we'll start doing our arena scheduling and getting it to Skyward, so. We're just trying to figure out the, like creating a schedule first based off.
Okay, so they haven't signed up yet?
No, a paper copy only, correct, yes.
And now they'll put those classes that were.
And now they're like.
That's why we're in there, that they'll actually be.
Well, with all the changes, I would hate to see the mess of kids trying to go through a change here.
Sure.
Well, we didn't know on the auto, we honestly didn't know until last week whether we were gonna be able to offer autos classes or not, because we didn't have a teacher, so there were a lot of things that were in flux.
Yeah, the other thing that this helps with is like, you know, if we. Me and Marissa have been working very closely with Skyward, like trying to get Skyward so we're not carrying out classes that are offered like at the same time. So that's another thing, like when you as a human create a schedule, you don't figure in those things, which can be really challenging, so we're really working with our consultant Jake. From Skyward and trying to. Figure out what's the best way, what's the best ad there to do this, because I'll make errors on my, you know, on my spreadsheet, but you know, like. If we can offer classes at separate times that don't conflict. You know, kids that want to take art and music and band and, and whatever other electives, so trying to figure out what the best ways to do this, so.
What determines whether some of these courses are a full credit or a half?
It's a good question, so if a class is run for a half a year, so like our math, our science. Those classes are two terms, which equals one semester, which is one credit, so.
It's all about hours, hours spent in the classroom, it's a good question.
All of our C T E classes, I believe are nine weeks, so that's just one term. So that would, therefore they would be a half a credit, so.
Okay, maybe for my benefit, that infant and toddler class.
Yeah, we have six.
Tell us more about that.
Um, so there was a syllabus that was attached to.
Talk to me as if I haven't looked at that.
So it's kind of an extension to our. Foundations of, of childhood.
Okay.
Class, so it's an extension to that and will be offered if, when midstate does get back to Syracuse on this, it will be offered as a dual credit class too. Um, so kind of looking at different, different avenues for students as well as, you know, we have some teacher assistants that go down to our daycare. Um, so just to really, I mean, there's six students already and we have not even half of our registrations in, but.
Will those students take the certification or?
I would assume.
They're, they're having to first, so the infant and toddler prerequisite is foundations early childhood where they go through the daycare certification. This would be an additional certification they add to that.
Which would allow them to even be some of our child care after school needs if they wanted to work for our child care.
Is there a age, there is an age to that, I think it's seventeen, which is this sticker on some of that, but. They take that course before they're seventeen, they can still get that certification when they're seventeen, but. Kind of it bumps the borders, students like that before something.
Yeah, that's a really, that's just a good comment though, that now that we're live streamed, in case someone watches this someday, how regulations can stop. You know, perfectly capable kids of sixteen year olds is an example, you can take C N A and you can go work in a nursing home, but you can't take the child. Pre-what, rep, which you're trained and certified in and go work with kids. But you can do the babysitting class and go be, like it just doesn't make any sense, and so why they're creating rules that stop. Being able to have a workforce to be able to do it. Okay, I'm done and I'm really glad.
There are sixteen year olds that are more responsible than fifteen year olds.
Because a lot of the things that get in our way is silly rules that shouldn't, and regulations that if they could be a little different, we could. Have some more work, and, and you know, summer. Students that, awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, that syllabus is linked on to that document too, if you guys want to.
Any questions?
So we, we need to make a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion and second. Now second.
Okay, a motion and second, any more discussion? All of them favorite?
Thanks Taylor, thanks Marissa.
Mostly Marissa.
For fall.
Okay, start college now applications for fall.
Can I add one more thing then, which this is a place to, but dual credit through midstate used to be only eligible for juniors and seniors. Midstate has changed that freshmen through seniors get dual credit now, so like our freshmen to use each get. Free credit speech class for their university or tech when they start, that was new. I think just for this upcoming year, I don't think the current have that, so. I don't think every tech is doing that, but midstate is, so that's just a cool thing that we have that. Okay, so I will present and Taylor, pipe in when you would like to, on the start college now, early college credit program applications. This was a March first deadline to myself and Taylor to approve for the upcoming fall semester. Just definitions that this side has been shown before, but to remind you, early college credit program, P C C P is university credit. Start college now is technical college credit. So that's the difference, they're different applications, they answer a little different things, both in the state statutes do by March first for fall. I just updated the chart that we've shown a few times now. This is our students currently taking them, so a couple of them in the room right now in spring, E C C P and or start college now classes. This, this is our number for fall, so we have twenty three fall courses, these aren't students, these are course requests. And then just actually one E C C P request, most of them are tech credits. Our midstate has really done well because they now have a university transfer degree. That a lot of their courses and gen eds are transferring very seamlessly to almost every U W, so. That's where we see more start college now, midstate works really well to come to us, we get enrolled and we just have a. More positive connection because they're in our building, so it helps get the students what they need, when they need it versus waiting for like one.
If you're getting into this, you can tell me, yeah, my question, but. Do we have options to provide, well, or is it required, I mean, I know we want to. Not suggesting we don't want to, I'll ask the next question, but like it isn't a requirement for us to offer this, right?
Statuteually, we have to offer both. Yeah, statuteually, we have to.
But we don't have to approve. Right?
Um, technically it's for approval if in the, in the state statute, if anyone.
It allows you to update eighteen credits.
You can, yeah, so students, as long as, you know, there's fine friends of it, the course isn't taught within your building. And you don't have a comparable course offering, in error, you can prove up to eighteen credits per student.
But the board could vote, the board could vote it down in fruit. If it didn't meet one of those parameters.
Students need to meet a certain criteria for policy.
Yeah.
And they cannot take E C C P and start college now in the same semester.
Sure.
And a total of eighteen credits for their entire academic career. Of both combined credits.
So where I'm going with it is I look at fall, right? And exactly what you just said, which is really cool that tech college credits transfer to U W is really easy and I see we're. We're, we have students in intro to psych, sociology in both. And I think unless it's changed, the E C C P is more expensive than the S C N.
It typically is.
Yeah, and so I was just wondering if it isn't about kids getting what they need and all about it, but if we could do it in a more cost effective way. It isn't hurting anything, I just didn't know if we had. And, and I know it's too late for this, it would have to be more of like how we set it up so that a student asks the right way, because I would never not.
And the one request, there is for this one, it's like this one, I'll explain what that one is and it's actually gonna be part of that U W S P pilot that's coming, so that's sort of people conversation.
Okay, but when I, so when a student is going through and they hear about start college now.
I do really pick, like I, I kind of maybe perfect why this summer has really dropped is I do challenge them, like do you, what is your reasoning for university credit? And some of them, like this student is trans, hoping to transfer to a school out of state.
Yep, got it.
So that's where it gets a little less fluid.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and so just making sure like she doesn't know where, she's going to be a junior, doesn't know where, would like to be on one of the posts, well. You're more likely to get that credit, not transfer from midstate and there's a website that I use called Transparology. To plug in, you know, all these courses, this intro psych, what does it mean in this gold school of yours, and then midstate can do it, B U W.
They did, so. Appreciate it, thanks so much.
Yep, yep. These are the specific course names and I have a few notes on these, just because the timelines of kind of what we've been going through aren't spining up super clear. So these are old, so this is spring, what we approved or you guys approved last fall, this is the actual enrollment, so I just like to make the point that typically we're approving. More applications than what are actually being enrolled in and paid for due to various reasons. And then this would be the applications that are being approved today. We have multiple intro to sociology, which I am gonna come back to, psychology almost always is our most common, just because again of the, the. Ability to pump that into like any major tech over four year, the, the flexibility with that. And the flip side of that is the ability to learn psychology online in the library on your own, right? Like that content is different than elementary statistics, which we do have two students taking right now, conveniently have math teachers in mom, so like. I'm not a class I would recommend for everybody, but it does work if you have the flexibility to. So the recommend, or the, the course applications here, this chunk I want to speak to because again, we did these applications due by March first prior to hiring. Our new teacher who has dual credit ability. So these students, there, there are two students in here who have, have been on youth apprenticeship half of their school year this year and to have youth apprenticeship need two courses of related content. So if they've sort of exhausted like upper level options, Mr. Cabello can always do like independent something with them. But we could have also helped them get their course related content to be a diesel mechanic at midstate taking those courses. However, we now have a teacher in house who they could be taught by that they haven't gotten that dual credit option, so. I left these applications in here for you to look at today, just with the what ifs, like I don't, if we get to next fall and something changes or. Something doesn't follow through, then these students, if they were taken out because of that, wouldn't have that option because it's too late to add it. So this is sort of just a safety net that they filled out ahead of time, now we have a teacher hired, I don't foresee us enrolling in any of these courses, but they have the application and the approval. The other note would be the sociology piece, I think Deb, can you put to the next slide maybe? Can you go to the next one, I think I put a slide for this. Okay, so sociology, this is sort of in reading the email that you got from Esprasho recently regarding the sociology or U W S P. Dual enrollment pilot program. U W S P is covering the cost of five students to take intro to sociology in the fall semester. Taught asynchronous online, just like they would apply through E C C P, but Point is paying for it. So they are paying for both, the cost, our students are in the library at our school doing the learning, just like they would for the C C P, but Point is paying for it. They're also then, spring, we will see the same option for astronomy one hundred, both of these fit into their gen ed category. Sociology transfers out to more, so what, five students from that list, Deb, can you go back now to the, the courses? Now, we have three sociology direct requests here and one here, so that's four, but what's not in this list is behind almost all of these psychology students is a check for alternate of intro to sociology. So when you approve it, you're saying yes to one of these two courses, sometimes like this year, that psychology online filled up. So then the student got bumped to their alternative and I already have notes on some students who say, it doesn't matter to me, these are three credits of gen eds, I don't care. So then I'm gonna pull them, seniors first, to get the free five seats of sociology and then move on to their start college application. Does that make sense? It's, there's like lots of pieces to it this year.
So we're gonna approve it so that they can get it, in case something would fall through, but you're going to default to. What we have as a free resource, um, to the district, I, in this partnership, yeah, awesome.
And points, you know, deadlines to get those students is May, students right now put these applications in knowing like I want eight credits, one or two of them are gonna be my college classes. But what they don't have in front of them due to our changing process is when those classes take place. So let's say a student, you know, picked up five out of those six core classes that are actually first semester, they might not have room for this anymore. Or you have to flip up that, so we don't have, it's not as straightforward, so that's why I think some of these requests we won't need in the fall, they'll actually maybe be bumped to spring. And then utilizing those free seats first, but I. Just some learning, better safe than sorry to have these approved and putting them on there so that we can have options that are what the students need. And we can always be satisfied and not to involve them.
And if our new hire in autos can teach those four classes or an equivalent that is a dual credit, then the students would stay here and get it.
Yeah, that's the advantage of getting these teachers that are dual credit certified.
And you won't see these specific courses on our registration or that he may be teaches, but what we didn't have before was like autos related courses that you haven't taken yet. Maybe one wants to be a public, you know, so like now we will have options he hasn't had.
Cause he also has the A S E certification.
Yes, yeah, so we will have enough in-house for that. Okay, then, next slide, okay, this is, I think these are two different agenda items on here, the next one.
This is correct.
Post-secondary involvement, this is the new policy that was created last year, this policy, the right word. To cover summer midstate classes or the ability to have students take the nursing assistance course through midstate. Because start college now doesn't cover summer. E C C P, university credits, there is a summer application that's in state statute, but there are no technical college applications to do so. So this was created, last year we had three students apply to take their senior this summer, two actually enrolled and completed the course. Those were two seniors, we gave a little feedback here about why having that in the summer was helpful, the, the biggest push to that is. In this school year, the only time midstate offers this B N A course is evening classes, including evening. Clinicals and you can't miss any of that, so any student involved in literally any student organization has to give up multiple week nights for like four hour chunks and that's really hard to do. So they did that in the summer instead, which is a little easier for some students to do, still our students are very busy and it's still hard to set aside. But that's a commitment they're willing to make of, I'm gonna commit one day, we would say four hour chunks and get this done to help me later on. The applications that were submitted for this summer, there are three seniors, going to be seniors and three going to be juniors. So with this being new, I wasn't sure what other information you guys wanted or needed at this time, other than knowing those applications. The students met the criteria of being a student of good standing and what was written in the policy that we just duplicated from the start college now. and what was written in the policy that we just duplicated from the Start College Now, um, school year form. And then, um, I did have the three juniors write a little extra of why this was helpful for them as a junior, because the way our policy was written, um, says like first priority or consideration for seniors, and then special consideration for juniors if they go at a certain credit level, just because, I, I guess I didn't know why that was in there, but that would be why I separated the two of them.
And, and to be clear, the summer, Marissa was right in articulating, effectively the status said, if you take college-level courses during the summer, we're gonna compensate you for it.
Through university, yeah.
Yeah, but they left tech colleges out, and you may remember that discussion last year. Uh, Dr. Watson presented that, um, to the board. These are not, and Pam, you can jump in, are not covered under the reimbursement. Like, the, these would be at a cost to the district of approximately.
Full cost to the district.
Yeah, full cost to the district, cause the other SCN and ECCP are, uh, would get, uh, reimbursed. So these are not, to clarify, there's another piece to this, is they're approximately five hundred dollars for five to six hundred. Any students who complete the CNA program, we receive up to a thousand dollars, the school district does, from the state through the, um, tech incentive grant program. So by them earning certifications, the, the district actually receives funds back for those that complete the certification of said program. I strongly support these applications for the reason, same reason we proposed it, is number one is students who would choose to do it during the year, mid-state doesn't offer this during the day. We wish they did, because kids could then choose, I'll take two blocks off and go do this. They would have to take it in the evenings, which means effectively they wouldn't be able to do any clubs or sports, uh, in school. And, uh, to me, that's a rationalization, um, for them having this option available during the summer. Um, and then also the, knowing that kids who complete the program, we get money back that's up to a thousand dollars per student, which is more than what the investment is in the, in the coursework. So I just wanted to get that point in, that these are not reimbursable. We are under no obligation as a district to do this, and we weren't as a board, you as a board to pass this. We did it because it's another option for our students, specifically for those students who are involved in co-intracurricular activities, which is eighty percent of our students in this school. Did I miss anything, Marissa?
Okay, so I think the, it's also hard with the ti, the timelines of things coming out are hard. So like having the students prepare to keep these on March first deadline with our other start college now applications. Mid-state just released the times and the dates last week for the CNA classes for summer and only for one section. So they're signing up for this with a goal, like, I, I really want to do this, and there is a little bit of like, they don't know what time their classes are yet, they just found out one section. Um, so that's harder for planning purposes, but these are the students that even after hearing like, hey, we don't have the times yet, this is a commitment here, scrap the all-in, like, they're hearing those messages. So I've had others say like, okay, I'm, I'm not all in, and I, we've taken those out. These are the students who are like, this is what I need, this is what I'm requesting, um, and that's.
So I have two questions, cause I just pulled up and looked at them again. Um, so what I'm hearing you say is that we don't have to pay for it in the summer, but these are students and I, you know, I look at them, they're all, they're all in sports. I mean, they can't do it during the school year, so they wouldn't be able to, or they'd have to give up something else.
Give up school sports or clubs.
Right? So, which probably means most of them won't, which means then we wouldn't get a thousand dollar reimbursement or a six hundred dollar investment.
If they completed the.
That, we would, so the.
We wouldn't though if they didn't take it.
If they didn't take it, you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Right, so these are students, when I look at them, that they're not taking it unless they can take it during the summer, probably. But I want to make sure that I'm like that, and, and I'm not still saying I won't approve it, I just want to make sure that it really isn't costing us anything, because these students, the reality of them being able to take it at a time that they have a right to take it and we would be paying for it.
Yep.
Um, they won't, because it's gonna conflict, and then we would actually lose out on a four hundred net gain.
Effectively, yes. We're not obligated to pay for this, but kids who complete the CNA program, we would get up to a thousand dollars per student for completing that. It, it varies every year, it's up to a thousand dollars, it can be more or less, Pam, can you tell me more about that?
Yeah, I'm sure that.
Yes, Pam, hands your hand up.
If they didn't pass, we would reimburse them.
That was the other question, right?
That's right.
That's all.
They have to pass.
All the balls, everything has to result in credit or passing or there's a reimbursement.
Exactly, yes.
But I just wanted to be clear that the investment piece that we get back, so, or, excuse me, the reimbursement piece does not go in the fund ten.
It goes to the CTE incentive.
Twenty-one, so it's, it's still, it's not reimbursing the fund ten budget. Okay, we're still getting the money, it's still used for CTEs, projects, equipment, anything like that, but it's in, it's still not reimbursing fund ten, general fund directly.
It comes back to the school, it goes in the CTE.
Just so that you're not thinking it's, you know, we're getting an extra four hundred dollars from our general fund budget. We don't, it's still the out cost, and then we're just forward funding other projects with that money. I guess it's the way to look at it.
It's spent in revenue receipts here, programs to get more kids into this program.
Right, right, right. And, and the mistake that exists right now, again, while we're being live streamed, is that they should allow us to pay for this out of that fund, not out of fund ten. Um, so that where the money is coming into is able to be the same place we could pay it out. But none of us can fix that today.
Well, the state reimburses us for the, the, for what portion, Pam? Approximately?
For what, what are we deflecting?
Early college credits, Start College Now, like during the.
Oh, the early, early, the ECCP is a minor piece. We're, we're lucky if we get twenty percent reimbursed. Start College Now will get a reduced cost.
Yeah.
Um, but I look at the credits, what they are online versus what we're getting charged, and it's a very small reduction in cost. Upfront, we just get an upfront reduction for that one, so it's.
So any, any students who are.
And different tech colleges don't necessarily give you the same cost for the same product, the same course.
To, to me, and I know we have to be like fiscally, like responsible, but the, the piece for me is, is that, you hit the nail on the head, Julie, is that students are gonna have to choose between participating in co-intracurricular activities now, unless, and I know mid-state is having conversations about potentially going down to offering it during the school day, which would solve some of those issues, but they're not right now, this is the reality, we're left with these kids having to choose. So this was a way to give those students, and you can see the testimonial from, this is from one of the two that took it last year, right? Yep, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Can this be made in one motion, or?
I think it has to be separate motions, Chris, for the regular applications, and then this one would have to be separate.
I think they all need to be separate, so Start College Now, early application.
Yep, and then this one.
So I'll make a motion to approve the seventeen applicants for the Start College Now students received for the fall semester two thousand point five.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion is second, we have a discussion. Are the players in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve the one student application received for the fall semester twenty twenty-five for early college credit application.
I'll second that motion.
Great, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Now, do you need a motion, Adam?
Yeah, for the summer post-secondary, those six applications.
The six or five?
There's only.
Give us six. Spikes came in.
There's six.
Three, three eleven, three twelve.
There's three.
Three eleven graders and three twelve graders.
I only see two seniors.
Um.
That's right here, I mean, go see them, I don't know, there should have been.
No, I mean, just like if.
Yeah, there's three.
If you have the number right, and all.
This is.
Three seniors, three.
Yeah. And if they don't follow that, that's fine, that's why I'm sure you'll see the right number. So I can motion for you?
I'll make a motion to approve the summer post-secondary enrollment applications for the three students entering eleventh grade.
I'll second.
Yes.
And I'm motion to approve the, uh, post-secondary enrollment for the three students entering twelfth grade as well.
I'll second.
Okay, there's one and a second, is there any further discussion? Not all in favor? Aye, opposed? Do you have a motion to pass this?
If you wouldn't mind just getting that one into the, I mean, in the future, just so it's all in that spot.
Yeah.
That'd be great, thank you. Thank you so much, how fun, exciting to offer students great things.
Okay, item F, approve the summer school course and teacher list.
I believe Deb shared with you all of the courses, we have forty different offerings this summer. Wide variety of activities, plans, that's impossible to read. But it has teachers at the top, and then kind of underneath them, what classes they're going to teach. Many classes are, um, geared towards K-three students or three-six, or we've gone three-eight. Some of them even go up to twelfth grade, just depends on what they are. Um, so there's definitely, I mean, there's physical activity, there's art, there's, um, our theater program, and that will happen after the summer school, so Jody Moore is in charge of that, where the kids will be here in the morning, they'll have lunch, and then they go into, um, the theater production. We have, um, band is going to offer lessons, um, some beginning bands, so some kids can kind of test out some instruments that will be entering the band, um, for fifth grade, you know, so that they can kind of see what they would like to play, but then also having kind of some lessons with kids who are already in band, so we can promote that as well. And some, a little bit of math, there's a little bit of reading, there's some, like I said, there's some arts, but it's just everything pretty much that you could offer, or, um, we're gonna have a babysitting course, so that, um, Mrs. Nada's gonna become certified, so that she can, um, teach that, and we can get some students certified, so that they can, um, go out and babysit. We have, um, drug or bed, gymnastics, dance, all of those things will be, um, available. So Mary Lou has been working feverishly to get all the bats in place, and then we will let, um, families start registering. I wanna say it's the first part of April, and we're changing it up a little bit, just while we're gonna have parents, um, register through Skyward. So just like they do, um, online verification, they will do the registering, um, process through Skyward as well.
I would say for a school our size, the rep of the offerings, the enrichment opportunities for kids is spectacular.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five summer school course and teachers as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Uh, G, private school transportation.
I just wanted to comment, but I also think it's really cool how you tapped into the other gifts that our staff and teachers have. And, you know, they might be an amazing English teacher, but when they love gymnastics too, and to be able to see that, I mean, it's just cool, because that's what makes people really love their job, when they can have that. So I saw many examples of that, and that is just a really great dedication of, um, putting something pretty cool together, so thank you. And I really don't want to talk about private school transportation. I think you're just kidding.
You know, sacred subject.
Um, we've only, I don't know if you want to open it up, Deb? So we've only received it from one of the two private schools that we typically see it from. Last year did not have, uh, requests about public, this year we do. Um, there's still time for if someone moved from the other school, which is, the statute isn't to me. Um, so it's in FYI, but we need to approve it, but we don't have a choice, we still have to approve it. Unfortunately, the, the rule has not been changed, we just rolled on a little bit, I think this family is three kids. Um, even though we worked really hard to get it through WASB as a resolution, it hasn't gotten any traction. Um, there is only one child this year. The, the other, the other kids must have been shipped to this family, cause there had been three of them this year. Um, so we have one student, it's based on our costs for transportation and bus transportation and fuel from this school year will be what they get paid for next school year. This year, average, um, I think it's like nine, excuse me, eight hundred and sixty dollars per year. So they need to submit us, uh, per semester enrollment for their child, and then I just prorate it, so the kid, child has missed two percent of the days, they only get ninety-eight percent of that semester's value. Are there any other questions I want to ask?
Good thing they put the statute on, cause it's not worded right, is it? It's supposed to be like two miles from our district, huh? It's very, this address is, this school is one or two miles.
Um, it's two miles from.
Our district, or the boundaries.
It's from the boundaries, it's outside the boundaries, um, I think it's five miles. I was an extra two miles.
So it's two miles from their home. The pupils.
Yeah, they have it wrong, it's, it's five miles, seven miles.
It's from the boundary, it's from the boundaries.
So it means it has to be within five miles of our.
The private school does.
Of our.
So it's our residence, doesn't matter where the resident is in our district.
Yeah, as long as.
Necessarily, but the school has to be within five miles of our boundary. So we have two schools that just bear with our, we're kind of.
Okay. Thank you. Trinity.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for private school transportation reimbursement per letter received February two thousand point five from Trinity Lutheran School.
No, it's from Bethel.
This one's from Bethel.
From Bethel.
Yeah, that, this one is Bethel.
It's a school, for the school year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand point six, per Wisconsin statute one point one point five.
I'll second the motion. Okay, a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. H, the fully wager piece for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Again, that's just my guess, but, um, everyone's, you've all got it, that you can look at as well. So way back when, when we first started using a P scale, we had, um, one year we had to kind of get everybody back on a P scale. So that's sort of where we're at this year, we had talked about, um, at the last meeting, for our new higher scale, is that we had two years where we did just CPI-type adjustments on everybody's wages. So we, everybody was off the scale for the last two years. So these numbers here are coming out of the, the new hire, where we, um, where I took the CPI adjustments that we have had for the last two years and created this grid. So then this one, um, is very similar to the new hire, and the new hire piece I purposely did at two point nine five. I just did the math and plugged in the differences. This one, I tried to keep it as close as possible to our breaks that we had had on our old P scale, as close as I could, so that, you know, when someone was going from this year to the next, next year, and it was between the year, or, excuse me, step twelve and step thirteen, they still got that little extra bump. And yes, these are all more, or not all, but the majority of them are over two point nine five. Um, what I'm going to do at the next meeting is I would bring to you our proposal, what we had in our referendum, was CPI plus five hundred dollars to everybody, and five hundred dollars would be prorated if that person's not a full-time staff member. But that was our proposal in the referendum, CPI plus five hundred dollars. So what I'm going to do is for every single person, I've calculated out what that value should be. So for example, if this person here's valued with that five hundred is fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, they get that step plus five hundred. But if it saves three dollars more that calculation, well, then that five hundred dollars is gonna get adjusted. Regardless, every staff member going into twenty-five, twenty-six as a current staff member will be put at a base, plus that supplemental, that five hundred's gonna go up or down a little bit, based on how the math works.
So it'll be slightly one way or another, like.
Just slightly one way or another, other than those handful of people, like, I don't know, like five or six people that have been, um, on, off the grid the last few years, that were hired in the last few years, they're gonna get a little bigger bump, because they've been off that new hire grid for the last few years. So this twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six for each one of these lanes, it shows the variance between what someone at step zero would have been, had. what someone at step zero would have been, had, you know, this is a bolter CPI, so I put in everybody's wages right now for twenty-four, twenty-five into a sample grid, and confirm that everybody was still getting these amounts. So I've tested it with everybody we have currently, that nobody is an outlier. This is only gonna be for twenty-five, twenty-six, is my guess, because we're gonna have to look at that again, the same as we did back when we started the pay scale. Now we're gonna have to generate a pay scale for twenty-six, twenty-seven and going forward, that will hopefully have like a five-year longevity. So our history on that, because not all of you were obviously here when we first started it. But in year two of getting everyone on that pay scale, we built something that was gonna last for five years. Now, yes, we had a couple of years where maybe CPI was more than what the average cumulative increase was for all teachers. And in those instances, if you wanted to give, say, three percent, and it was coming up at two point nine six, we gave everybody a four percent, excuse me, a point zero four percent supplemental pay. So everybody still gets the full amount, but everybody still stays on the scale. What hurt us after COVID was CPI jumped up huge amounts, and it was outside of our realm. Nobody knows what CPI is going to be. I mean, it's kind of all over the place right now. They were still predicting it's gonna stay around three for two thousand twenty-five, but, you know, going, you know, further months, but we can't really guarantee that. Then the last thing was in April, and we'll come with the full pay options, just like I've done in the past. We're pretty much just gonna stick to the referendum on what we said in the referendum, CPI plus five hundred. But I will come to you then with those numbers, because by then, anyone who would wish to retire, that was a school year hourly or salary person, would have retired or resigned by April first. So I would be able to have a more clear number of what that's going to cost the district going into next year, along with health insurance is out to date. So that's all placed into the compensation package as well, eventually. But this grid is like the next step, get all our current people on the grid, so we can start working on contracts. And then I can start figuring out what costs are going to be for that, you know, going forward, and I can present that in April. Does anyone have any questions? I know this is a lot, what I'm gonna be presenting, you know, when I provide it, because this will go up on our staff tab of our website, the pay scale is. I'll get rid of all the blue, you know, and I'll change these highlights. I highlighted it so you could see what the variances were. But the blue will go away, and they'll just see what the twenty-five, twenty-six basis, so it's not quite so cluttered going forward.
Can you just explain to me again why there were some staff members off the grid?
Yes, so the last time a new hire grid was approved was in two thousand twenty-two. So anybody hired for the twenty-two, twenty-three, no, twenty, yes, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, were off the grid. So they, they just stayed on that pay grid where they were at. They continued to get their CPI raises, but they went off that grid right away. So everybody's still always moved up a step every year. Everybody's still got their CPI every year that you all had approved. It's just when they first started, they were already behind maybe two hundred dollars.
Okay, so, so with this, everybody will now be on this grid.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, and I verified that all of our new people. So the new hire grid, if you remember, always said two point nine five, or just the one, because like I said, I did the math, I, I forced this cell and made it calculate that cell. These are just the opposite. I put these numbers in and made it calculate this way. But every new person then, so like base is gonna be base across the board. So somebody with no experience coming in is just gonna pump on there. Someone at step seven is gonna be just a smidge different, so when they go into the next year, they're gonna maybe get an extra five dollars.
It's not much, but it never really be.
Right, but everybody will be back on a scale, which I haven't yet created. So all the new hires, all the current hires that are on twenty-five, twenty-six will all end up on a new twenty-six, twenty-seven. Does that make sense?
And the nice thing about the five hundred dollars and it not being percentages, they're our only employees, and your, your lowest paid, your newer teachers are gonna have a bigger bump with that, because it's five hundred dollars for everybody, which, you know, when you talk about trying to retain folks. Yeah, for a full-time person. You're trying to retain folks, typically, you know, there's a lot of turnover with your hourly staff and stuff. That's a nice little incentive for them, that, you know, potentially could be a week's paycheck for.
And it's not going to be based, because it's only for the four years of the referendum. So it will not be going for the next three years of the referendum, it will not be based, because that money may not be there after the referendum.
But it's gonna be there for the four years.
But they'll also get a pay out over those.
Thank you for your work on this, Pam.
You're welcome. You do need to approve that. Okay. It wasn't to be adjusted. It wasn't, also.
It did not say we needed to do an approval on the adjustment.
Oh, it's in the discussion action, though. Oh, yeah, yeah, we have to approve it.
Pam, what would you want further suggestion, most of them to approve the?
So what are we approving? You're approving the.
Two point nine five.
Can you pull that back up again, please? So this is, scroll it down, just so I can see the title of the worksheet, please. So it's actually called Salary Model Plan Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six Pay Grid for Current Teachers Pay Scale. That is its title. Because the one I presented last time, I put new hire in here per Mary Ann's request. So that, so that one was, but that is the title, was to approve that for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Salary Model Plan Twenty-Twenty-Five, Twenty-Twenty-Six Pay Grid for Current Teachers Pay Scale as presented.
A second motion to approve. Okay, a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's a, that'll be a real trip one here. So our, our vision was approved three years, so it's good through June thirty eighth, two thousand twenty-seven. And we don't have to approve vision this year, but that's just an FYI. Our dental, um, our dental costs have not changed. Our single coverage is fifty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents for a single per month, and a family coverage is one seventy-five, thirty-two cents per month. That has not changed either. The way it will break out, I will have that calculated for April, and what percentages, and whether we keep it at the fifteen eighty-five or not. But those costs haven't changed. They have, the American Dental Association didn't come out with any changes or anything in regards to what we were offering, so. It's all standard school. We just needed to approve the current years, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
I'll make a motion to approve the dental, the healthcare provider for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year with a zero percent increase over the twenty-four, twenty-five grid.
Second.
Okay, a motion, is there any further discussion? Okay, you take the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Motion passes. Yeah, so I guess the only one I would mention at this point right now is, there's a lot of narrative out there about the abolishing the Fed, Department of Education, and the uncertainty with federal funds right now for school districts, that's what we're dealing with. But I would anticipate before any of that would happen, there would probably be, the, the word we're hearing is it would take an act of Congress to approve abolishing the, the Department of Education. The big concern on our end of school districts is, is there's a lot of federal funding, specifically for our students with disabilities, is, is an area that's funded our title funds. That's the anxiety for districts, is not knowing where, you know, the talk is, if this were to happen, the money would go back to the states. There's just a lot of unknowns for us right now, but as of right now, we're just kind of proceeding with as planned.
You know, I think that a lot of that stuff too is, there's, there's really nothing that is explaining to us the other side of, you know, we're hearing a lot of the, the fear, you know, this and that. But we don't really have any place to go to get an answer to what will happen if they do this.
Correct, yeah.
And I've got a hard time believing that they're just gonna let all these schools fail. I mean, it, it just, it, it's not in their playbook at this. I mean, I can't see that happening. It would be a complete disaster if, if schools lost federal funding in any manner. So I think this is a waiting scene.
The only thing I would say, Chris, I don't disagree with you, because I will tell you, I'm all for it, to Julie's point earlier, get rid of bureaucratic red tape when it comes to education. The scary thing for me is, we could have the same conversation about school vouchers, like in the state, as far as that money going away from public schools right now, and, and it's happening like extraordinarily, like huge amounts are going away from public schools. That, that's the thing that concerns us, is, is that the red tape, yes, get rid of it, put more, put the money in our hands for local control. I'm, I'm of a trust but verify. So, so I agree with you, there, there are positives. I had someone ask me this, like, what would you, what would you do? I said, I'll be honest with you, if they assured us that the federal funds would be there, the dollars would be there, I have zero, there's not a lot I can tell you, like, ooh, I don't know how we would operate without the Department of Education. It's about the funding for us. If they can guarantee that money's coming in, and that state gets local control over it, I, I would speak like a baby, I think. Pam?
Danny and I attended the federal funding conference, conference for WOSBO, and there was a legal person that spoke, who actually is from Washington, D.C. And she, she stated that right now for twenty-five, twenty-six, it would be very difficult for them to pull back large sums of money. It was already kind of looking at a five to ten percent decrease for the federal funds like Title, like the E S S A and the I D A grant. So those, those types of things weren't quite so much in jeopardy. But a five to ten percent, ten percent for us is about eighty-five, eighty-five thousand dollar decrease. So unless we have other budgetary information come out before that, that's probably what I'll have to budget, an eighty-five thousand dollar decrease in those two. As far as the direct federal grants, they said those are a little more iffy. In fact, I just mentioned to Jason, I'm so happy I saw the REIT grant estimate was out, we were getting a little bit more. That was Wednesday. Today, the site is gone. So it could just be offline for temporary. They did say they hope to have everything backed up when the application's out by April. But, so that's another fifty-two thousand, we would be out. And I'm a very conservative budgeting person, as you all know. So if we're going into the uncertainties in June, I'll probably stick with a five percent decrease, unless I hear something different, just so you're aware, that's what I'll do. So the majority of that other money's gonna have to be made out by twenty-ten.
It's just kind of hard to plan now.
No, not at all, it's not at all. Plus you have the state budget that's up there. We have no idea what that is.
And the state, state budget, I mean, my crystal ball would be that the state budget won't be out on time.
Right.
You know, I mean, we've seen it as late as not getting passed till October.
End of October, right?
Yeah, beginning of November, and I would, I would see this to be a year that could look that way, and I don't blame them, because they don't have a clue what, they don't know what holes they might have to plug, to be able to make a decision how to use dollars. And so they, their bands are tied from the perspective of, they have to let a little of the shake out in order to know
Exactly.
what that will look like. But just as an FYI, the federal bill is Bill H R eight ninety-nine, and it's the U.S. Department of Education. The bill that was introduced to end the U.S. Department of Education, it's H R eight ninety-nine, it was introduced on January thirty-first. And it, that's all that's happened. It hasn't passed the House or passed the Senate. It's not, it's just introduced. So that's the status right now in the name of the, of the bill. But, yeah, I mean, so I don't see our state, I mean, Wisconsin is in such a better place compared to a lot of states that, you know, we have six point one billion in reserves, four point one billion that they will address in this budget cycle is what I've heard, and two billion that they will keep for rainy day fund. But, and of course, they're looking to do some tax cuts and different things around that, but, I mean, there are, there are states that have nothing. They are like, and so, I mean, at least we're in a spot in our state that once some decisions are potentially made, locally, we can make some of those decisions. Certain, I mean, but, I mean, I don't know that I want them to make some decisions until they know what's kind of in front of them, because they don't know what hole potentially they might need to plug. And so I think it's gonna be tough, and I think Pam's gonna have to bring to us something that might look kind of crappy, and we might not have any idea what that might look like.
Too comfortable with that.
Yeah, because I don't, because we're not gonna know, and to assume that we're gonna have things that are unknown, actually, I'd rather see what's the worst case scenario, because then we can actually share with our.
Yeah.
Well, while they're still in your budget process, we can actually share and give that data to our senators and representatives to say, if these things happen, this is what it will look like for our district. And I think that's, that's important in messaging to share.
Chris, what I'd love to see them do is give us a block grant for the total amount of federal dollars, just give it to us, and I'm not even joking, let us decide, you know, where, where those dollars are.
And they can increase it by the cost, edit cost to actually run the whole program, so that all that money can just go in and get distributed locally. I'm all for it.
We have a very strong Department of Instruction in the state of Wisconsin compared to other states as well, and we have a lot of granting for short staff like every other, you know, place as well, but we have a very good structure in place on how to manage the money that comes in. And I think we are in a much better place than the state of Wisconsin in that aspect as well.
That's all I have for legislative updates, so. Okay, everybody hold the mouse. Future agenda items, the one that Mary Ann asked me to add was the closed session for April for going over the district administrative evaluation. And then we have our existing future agenda items. I would like to, for April, I believe we will be able to, at that point, Taylor can bring, I'm gonna do a teaser here on some, some auto for this year, potentially a partnership and some opportunities for our students for auto this year that will be at low cost to the district to offer some auto's classes until we get Mr. Kam on board for next school year. So I feel like Taylor will be able to present to the board what those options are.
Well, that's a prime example of picking a small school up. So excited to him.
Yeah.
That's really awesome.
So, exciting.
It's really exciting.
Okay. Any more motions to the room?
Make motion to adjourn.
A second motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Ladies, thank you.